All right, I think we all heard that, that the meeting is being recorded. So this is our board meeting for Monday, April 20th, 2020. This is a live stream meeting, so we're all on Google Hangout. Dr. Olson, I'm forgetting the last three times we've done this. Do we need to do a roll call of who's on the call?
I think you should call the meeting to order, then do a roll call.
All right, let's do that. Well, I will call the meeting to order. It is 6:34 and let's go ahead and do a roll call. I'll try and run through so that people know when to speak. And if I miss someone, please let me know. I think we have one person on the phone. Otherwise, anyone on this call should be able to see who's on there. But Annette?
So Annette, unmute and state your name for the record.
You know what? She might have stepped away.
No. Here, Annette Engeldinger.
Dr. Olson?
Here, Jeff Olson, superintendent.
I know Chris Overbow is on the line. Darren, you're on the?
Yep, present, Darren Doherty, principal at North Elementary.
Doreen?
Here, Doreen Elke, principal at South Elementary.
John?
John Carlson, board member.
Awesome. John Graff?
Oh, sorry.
No worries.
Here, John Graff, principal at the middle school.
Mark?
Mark Bachman, operations and maintenance supervisor, present.
Tim?
Tim Locenskard, board member.
Thank you. Tim Regner?
Tim Regner, business manager, here.
Sarah? Sarah's here. Now, board members, Tracy? Tracy, are you in the call?
Yes. Unmute Tracy.
All right. I am here. Do you guys hear that? Was there a really weird sound just now too, or was that just me?
Define weird sound. There was a dog.
No, I'm here and I'm gonna go back to muting, sorry.
Awesome, no worries. It's Eve?
Yep, here, thank you.
Beautiful, beautiful mustached Mr. Dixon?
Drew Dixon, board member.
Awesome. That was someone in my house dropping stuff, so. Bill?
Bill Soderlund, board member.
Thank you. And then I am Ben Leonard, board chair. And has Vicki joined the call yet?
I don't believe so.
All right, so we're without Vicki. Go ahead, Dr. Olson.
Well, we also have Hazel Reinhardt from Hazel Reinhardt Consulting with us.
Yes, thank you. Welcome, Hazel.
Thank you, thank you. Love your shirt.
Oh, thank you. So we've adopted the agenda, we've gone through roll call. So we're gonna jump right into.
Did you adopt the agenda?
Oh, no, we didn't. I'm sorry. It's been a weird day. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, John Carlson.
Second, Tim Locenskard.
Okay, we'll run through the roll call. Tracy?
Aye.
Drew?
Aye, Drew Dixon.
John?
John Carlson, aye.
Tim?
Locenskard, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderlund, aye.
Thank you. Ben Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Olson. Now we can jump into the demographic housing and enrollment study. So take it away, Hazel.
Well, thank you. I trust that you have the access to the PowerPoint?
We do. It is in our board packet.
Okay. Well, I want to use this as a discussion guide. So we have, you know, a little structure to our discussion. The first thing I want to talk about is the projection environment. We are in a period of very low fertility at this time. And that means the number of births have been decreasing in both the United States and Minnesota. And it raises the question of whether a larger percentage of the millennials will remain childless. This is what now many demographers think with. We have, our levels of fertility are well below replacement. The other thing that's happening is that Americans are less mobile. For the first time since the Second World War, we have the percent moving every year in single digits. And it has historically been 20% or more a year who changed their address. So people are less mobile. We're very familiar with this. The population is aging. And that is largely driven by the baby boomer generation passing the thresholds of the age 65. And this, of course, will most likely see itself in a demand for different mix of housing, which we're already seeing. Immigration from abroad has slowed. Minnesota's population is back to a pattern of net outmigration. In fact, the state of Minnesota has been a place that has exported more people than it's imported for most of its history. And then in the period about 1987 to somewhere in the early 2000s, we had a net inflow of people. Now we're back to exporting people again. And then, of course, the newest thing is totally uncertain about the short term and long term effects of this COVID-19 shutdown. Because it will, there's no way we can foresee what's happening. But normal will not be what it was before. I think that everyone agrees on. So it's a different environment than we would have talked about, let's say, if you, if I were talking to you a year earlier. And if we look at the next slide, the past 10 years in your district, and most of these things are actually the past nine years. The enrolled, the school age population in the district, that is those that I can count as being enrolled somewhere, increased by 420 students, 21%. The resident enrollment, which is resident students attending the St. Peter Public Schools, increased by 362 students, about 22% as well. Your market share is about 85%. It's up ever so slightly in the past nine years. But you are, you had a net loss of 90 students to other public options. So in that sense, you sort of export students as well. The next slide shows education choices compares the St. Peter Public Schools with the state of Minnesota. And this is 2017-18, which was the date available at the time. And as you can see, you have a smaller percentage of your school age population in non-public schools. You have a smaller percentage open enrolling in and out. And you have a significantly smaller percentage in charter schools. And that's one of the reasons that your market capture rate is significantly higher than the state average. We look at the periods, the next slide, since 2009-10, total enrollment in the St. Peter Public Schools excluding early childhood increased by 445 students, or 25.5%, essentially. And non-residents increased from 5.3% to 6.5%. And then the next slide shows those numbers. And you can see the non-resident students increasing from 93 to 142. And then you see the parallel numbers for the total enrollment and then your resident enrollment. And then the next slide shows the enrollment projections. That is what the, we estimate project the enrollment to be in 2029-30. And here, we're projecting enrollment to either just slightly increase or modestly increase by 2.2%. This again excludes early childhood. And this is different, as you note, from what you experienced in the past 10 years when you actually had pretty rapid growth. Now, what is underlying this? Well, first of all, the big factor is that kindergarten is projected to be smaller than the previous year's grade 12. That means you graduate out more students than you take in in the fall. And this depresses growth. And we'll see in the next slide where there's some hint of that trend beginning to start now. But that is seriously depressing growth in these projections. The projections assume that net in-migration will continue. But what we see is that the projection for single-family detached housing is very slow in the next three years. In fact, it's not even quite a third of what it was in the past three years. So normally, we'd say that the number of new single-family detached housing units would have to increase rather substantially. And in the current environment, I think that's hard to see that that's going to happen very soon. The next slide looks at components of enrollment change. And this is sort of a very standard demographic look. We see the leftmost columns year-over-year change, and then the percent that is. Then the natural increase-decrease, if it's a positive number, it means there were more kindergarteners in the fall than there were seniors who graduated in the spring. And as I mentioned, you'll see here in the last two years that you're starting to see some negative, just slightly negative numbers. Net migration is, means that there are more students in the fall than one would have thought there would be simply by aging progressing students from grade to grade. And the combination of the natural increase-decrease in net migration is overall change. And so if you look at the change you experienced in the past decade, it was really significantly driven by that net migration. And that, that means that you had development. You had new people in the district who had school age children. The next slide shows enrollment. And I simply didn't fill in those four years that are missing there because we just get such a concentration of numbers. We calculate migration on the diagonals. So if you look at 2014-15, you see kindergarten had 143 students. In the transition to grade one, that number increased to 150, then to 165, to 170, to 176, to 182. Didn't see that migration. If you look across the top row at kindergarten, you can see that it's fluctuated from year to year, but basically has not increased. And then if you look at the bottom line of your 12th graders, 158. Then the missing number, 124, 140, 120, 160, 156, 182. But you see, we have in grade 11, 192. So even if there's some attrition in that, you know, you probably have 185 or so. The next year, 163, 188, 181. So you have a number of years that we can see where the senior class will be larger than we're anticipating for kindergarten. Another way of looking at this, if you look at 2019-20, is simply to look at the average grade size. And this is simple arithmetic here. K to 4, you have an average grade, 153 students. 5 to 8, 177. And 9 to 12, 181. And the reason, part of the reason that the middle school and high school grades are larger is that you have an inflow of students who have either attending non-public schools or have returned to the district or some reason at both the grade seven and then ever so slightly at grade nine. But even when I adjust for that, there is no built-in growth momentum. And by that, I mean that your elementary grades are not larger. And hence, you need that continued in-migration to drive growth. So now, if we turn to look at resident live births, which is the beginning step of thinking about projections, there is a relationship between the number of students born and kindergarten classes five to six years later. And I'm showing you here the state of Minnesota, LaSueur County and Niccollet County. Although, of course, most of your students come from Niccollet County. And it's the reason that I use that as a proxy for you. But what I'm going to call your attention to is the decline in births in Minnesota. In 2007, they peaked for the first time for some number of years at 73,675. And you can see it has fallen since that time. And in the last four, five years, you see it is consistently going down. Not, not by a lot, but consistently going down. In LaSueur County, again, you have, it's very, it's very typical for births to fluctuate around. And especially when the numbers are smaller. But you see, started out in the 350s, then dropped. And kids come, come back up to 324, 325. And Niccollet County, on the other hand, births started at around 370, went up into the 400s, and have been declining certainly in the last three to four years. Now, in the report, I also show you the births coded to the district. I tend not to use that because it's less reliable. And if you look at those numbers, you see that the births recorded to the district have declined rather precipitously in the last few years. Now, my concern is that that may reflect parents not having it reported by address. So that's why I made the decision to use the Niccollet County births as a proxy for the district. And I then have to take these births, which are reported by calendar year, and convert them to a school year, which I call the kindergarten pool. That is, so these births are age five as of September 1st. And you'll see on that chart that I have the Niccollet County pool. And then the percent that St. Peter Public Schools kindergarten was of that pool. And you'll see, actually, the, the numbers on this kind of small population are actually pretty stable. I've seen very much more, so this is pretty stable. But it's been especially stable in the last three to four years. It's holding around at 37% to 39%. And then I, the next slide I show you, I take the averages looking for what the past seven years, six years, five years, four years, three years, two years. And you can see it's, these averages running, you know, about 37% to 38%, basically. So I then have to make some decisions about what to use as assumptions. And I made the decision to use a kindergarten assumptions, to use a low assumption, which is the average of the past four years of 38.31. And then I wanted something a little higher. So I selected the highest ratio that occurred in the past 10 some years. And that occurred in 2017-18 of 39.95, or about 40% of the pool. And then long-term, in the, because that'll give me projections for three to four years. And now I need something longer term. And so I based it on projections made by the state demographers office. And in the past 15 years, Niccollet County resident births increased from 0.53% to 0.55% in Minnesota. So basically fairly stable. And in that period of time, the range was from 0.52 to 0.61. And I'm assuming here 0.55 for the next several years. The next table shows you that the projections made for zero-year-olds by the state of Minnesota for Minnesota. And the data here tells us that these projections are high. The difference between the actual of 2017 and the projection is about 3%. And in fact, the, the projections is even higher for 2018 than the actual. But I've stayed with the 2017 numbers, which are in the perenns. And from that, using that 0.55, in the next slide, you will see that the projected Niccollet County kindergarten pool, the bolded numbers came from that earlier table of births that have already occurred. And then the projection is based off of these assumptions. And as you'll see, it's basically very flat. Now, in reality, it's not going to be that flat. But it simply tells us that it's not going, all the data we have suggests it's not going to be going up in any significant way. And then the next slide shows us, simply taking those percentages, those ratios at 38.31 and the 39.99, and multiplying them against the pool. And I have kindergarten projections. And what I'd call your attention to is sort of the total of those projections at the foot of each of those columns. And the 10 years add to either 1,452 or 1,512. And in the past 10 years, you had 1,512 kindergarten students. So you basically had, the highest projection is putting into the model over time the same number of kindergarten students that you had in the past 10 years. The next slide shows the net migration. And I draw your attention, first of all, to the total, which is what we saw earlier in that other slide. And then I have an asterisk there, and this I'm looking for October to October. So like when it says 16 to 17, means October of 16 to October of 17. And you'll notice that the high school, there's a 40, and I have an asterisk there. And 18 of these students were in the transition from grade 11 to grade 12, which is some anomalous event occurred. Because you can see it's very, very different from what happened at any other time. But just to call your attention in, from kindergarten to grade one, basically, not a lot happened. Some years close to zero, one, two, some years as high as six. Two to four, you'll see you pick up more students coming in. And then five to eight, that time when you have a lot of middle school students coming in, you could see that, I guess I'd say you have a couple of very low years. But otherwise, maybe around 20, 25 students making that transition. And then not many students come in, in the transition from grade eight to grade nine. And you'll see that overall in high school. That's a very, very small number, except for that anomalous year. And then I summarize it and say that net in-migration occurs at nearly every elementary grade and every high school grade, middle school grading, almost every year. And at high school, almost, not as, not quite as frequently as at the elementary and middle school year. And then that consistent net inflow at grade seven and grade nine. At grade seven, it's about 8% per year. And at grade nine, maybe 2%, sometimes 3%. So you can see it's that middle school one that really makes the difference. And then the slide that says projected survival rates. That's another way of expressing the migration and also whatever might be a very, very miniscule death rate in this population. So any number above 1.000 means that you have a net inflow of students. And anything below that has an outflow of students. And I took as assumptions here, for the low assumption, the average of the past two years. And in the high, the average of the past four. And I call your attention to a couple of things. And the K to 1 transition, actually, the percentage is higher, 2.6, if you think about it that way. Inflow every year on the low with only 1.1 on the high. It's just a quirky thing there. But you see, 1 to 2, the high assumption does put in more students. It puts in more students at 2 to 3. It puts in more students at 3 to 4. Slightly less at 4 to 5, slightly less at 5 to 6, slightly less at 6 to 7. Then a little bit more at 7 to 8, 8 to 9, 9 to 10, 10 to 11, and 11 to 12. So one way to think about this is that the high assumption puts in more late middle school and high school students. So that would be one, one way of thinking about them. And then the next slide, which shows the enrollment projections, just how that works out every year. Now, what this arrangement tells us is that the kindergarten assumptions are making a bigger difference in these projections than the two migration, the difference in the two migration assumptions. So because the low kindergarten, you see, produces both of the lower projections. And high kindergarten produces the two higher projections. And then I take these projections and I put them in your K 4, 5, 8, 9, 12. And then I summarize those results in the next slide. In the first five projection years, and the significance of that, why, why I think it's important to look at the first five years, separate from the second five years, is that in the first five years, most of those kindergarten students have already been born. So not much, not much is depending on those projections of births. Secondly, we see the effect of the migration on middle school and high school. Because at the middle school level, the first five years are not affected at all by the kindergarten projections. So in the first five years, K 4 ranges from 10 fewer students to 30 more students. Middle school ranges from 2 to 7 fewer students, and in other words, flat. And into 20 students. So at the high end, a few more, but probably very easily managed. In 10 years, however, the K 4 ranges from 12 fewer students to 28 more, so more of a swing. And these latter projection years affect, are affected by that flat kindergarten projection. So, so in the 10-year projection, the K, the elementary is really very affected by those kindergarten assumptions. In the middle school, in 10 years, decreases by 1 to 38 students. And high school increases 11 to 39. So bottom line of these projections, it says that overall, not much growth projected. However, most of the hit is taken at the middle school level, with some at the elementary, depending on the assumption. And high school continues to increase throughout the projection period. So then we need to ask ourselves, what could make these projections too high or too low? Well, one thing that we have to recognize is that, you know, I can't be 100% certain whether the projected flatness of Minnesota and Niccollet County resident births will be a good predictor for St. Peter Public Schools kindergarten. As I said earlier, I don't think your kindergarten will, will be vastly different from this. But it may not be quite as flat as this, could even be less, we don't know. And then there are other reasons that, what could make this too high? Well, a recession, which now seems very, very likely. In fact, most thinking is that we will be into a pretty deep recession because our unemployment rates now are approaching what they were in the Great Depression. And the other thing that could affect it is more students would open enroll out of the St. Peter Public Schools or attend charter schools. And what could make these too low? Main thing is, a factor would be if kindergarten was, was, projections were too low. So that's sort of the cohort method. Now, now let's go on and look at housing data. Because housing data, they're very interesting. They're not always a good predictor of enrollment, but they, but they certainly inform us of sort of dynamics in the community. And how, these data refer now to your resident students. Of your resident students, 71% live in single-family detached units. And we want to really emphasize that because it is single-family detached. it is single-family detached units that produce the highest yield of students per unit. And in fact, um I have not seen a single school district that doesn't have a majority of its students coming from single-family detached units. And you have eighteen percent of your students living in apartments. And then the next slide shows you your number of housing units. I don't know the total number because I don't know how many um housing apartment units you have. Then we see the number of K twelve resident students out of each of these unit types. And then we get a yield uh for us uh students where we have the number of units. So you can see slightly uh less than half a student for single-family detached. People often get excited about the growth of of a town home, so we're going to have so many new town homes. Well, as you can see, the yield for your district is zero point one five. They need a lot of town homes to get school-aged kids. And that's very typical across the four states where I've worked and done this kind of of work. Your duplex units have a very high yield, uh you don't have a lot of them, that's that's fairly typical as well, that duplexes uh tend to yield uh uh have a good yield of of students. And then the other factor here is that eighteen percent of your single uh family detached units were built in two thousand or later. But they house almost twenty-nine percent of your resident students. And that tells us how important new units are. And that is true everywhere that I have studied this, is that the new the new units have the highest yield of students. And then the next uh uh table shows uh the num- these are now single-family detached units. The the sort of era in which they were built. And then their uh s- yield of of Saint Peter Public School students. And it's just astounding here that um you get of zero point seven zero students out of units built in two thousand or more recently. Compared to pre nineteen fifty, zero point four one. So uh really significant uh uh sh- difference there. And we see that that's very typical, very common, but it but again reinforces the importance of new units. Then if we look at the value of units on the and the uh new, the year of the unit built, note that's Niklet County only, no data for La Sura. Um, if we look at the value of the units, again, we see something that's fairly typical and counterintuitive. And that is that we often think, oh, the the um modern modestly priced units uh will have children. And what these data say over and over and over again is that more expensive units yield more school-aged children. And that's the case for you as well. And then we have a a s- uh slide here that looks at the turnover, that is, whether units sold. And these would be existing, they were existing pre two thousand seventeen, so the new units are two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. There were sixty-four of them, and they had a yield of zero point four seven. If a unit sold, a unit that existed pre two thousand seventeen, the yield was zero point four five compared to those that did not sell, that means they were not offered per se, uh zero point four one. So you get a little bit of of a bump to growth if a if a unit turns over, but it's really those new units that are important. Now I want to look at the age of people in those units, you know, how how likely is age to to bring about turnover? You see about forty-five percent of all your single-family detached units have one person aged fifty-five and over. Twenty-seven percent have one person sixty-five over. Ten point six percent have one person seventy-five and over, and two point six percent have some at least one person eighty-five and over. So it's say that that there's a uh the age of the population will have a a moderate turnover. I've seen districts where the eighty-five plus will run three, three and a half percent, so um it's not extremely extremely high for you. And then if we think about these single-family detached units, twenty-two percent of them contain a Saint Peter Public School uh student. Now, when we look at it's what's projected for growth, and this comes from local officials. We have eighteen single-family detached homes projected for the years twenty, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and two thousand twenty-two. And sixty-six apartment units, all of the action being in Saint Peter. And then uh the next slide is what's important here is that those eighteen single-family detached units uh compare with sixty-four that were built in the three previous years. So we see a much slower rate of growth. And then I looked the last slide, I look at a comparison between the housing unit method, which is residence and the three, four cohort projections. And you might say, me, well, the housing unit doesn't have in the non-residence, and that's true. But my experience with the housing unit method in a stable environment, which yours is, it's not a lot of very rapid growth. The housing unit method almost always, haven't I done all, always over projects. So I think that what we're seeing here is that these numbers are coming in eh just shy of twenty-one hundred, is what I would say, in in uh the period of two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone might have. Uh, summarizing it, you've had rapid growth, projecting a much slower growth. Enrollment depressed by the fact that uh graduating seniors will outnumber incoming kindergarten students in the fall. Not much uh uh housing projection growth, not very ro- robust as uh officials are looking forward, and now with the current economic situation, not likely to be. Uh, you have a uh little net loss, about a hundred students, other public options, meaning open enrollment and um and charter schools. Non-public enrollment in the district is declining. So that's sort of the environment that that I the see you in and see this situation for the next decade.
So Hazel, if we were talking about uh trying to, you know, obviously increase our our population, our school-aged population. And the the takeaway that I would state would be first of all, we need to get more single-family expense, more expensive, single-family units built.
That's right.
That's quite of an understatement. And then secondly, we need to be really, really good at what we do so we can turn around and attract more open enrolled students into the district. Um, and I think those those two things would be the things that would put us on the high end.
I agree, I agree. Um, and I don't know how uh what your practice has been. Uh, school districts, public schools really have to market themselves these days. You have to remind people how good you are, how all your strengths, uh uh why, you know, your schools are are a very good choice. And then, yes, you you want um it sounds funny, but to say uh it's relatively expense expensive, single-family uh detached units. You want people to see that Saint Peter, the Saint Peter School District is a good place to invest your money, live, and send your children to school.
Well said.
I've stunned everyone into silence.
Thank you so much, Hazel, that was uh really thorough. Um, what other questions do we have?
Hazel, what are the most common questions you would get asked by a school board? It's a little bit uh more unusual, I think, trying to make this work on our telepresence than if we were all in a big room face to face.
Eh eh exactly, uh exactly. Um, I think the questions uh depend on um somewhat how 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 consistent the numbers are. If there's a if there's a lot of variability of numbers going up and down, like those uh ratios of burst of the kindergarten pool. Uh, people ask a little more about that. Uh. Also, um it depends on what what people's notions were before, whether they whether they perceive themselves. I find generally two things, either people feel the projections are too low, or people feel they're way too high. That seems to and and uh my experience is is that that tends to stem from uh some people are very, very optimistic and other people tend to be pessimistic.
Well said.
And and that sort of affects their reaction to uh uh projections. Um, one of the things I tried to explain, and if I were sitting there, I would say, how are we going to go from a period of having really rapid growth to this period where you're saying uh there isn't going to be much growth? I mean, that's one of the questions that that I would. And I would respond to that by saying, uh, one, it it's a little harder to see. I tried to point it out a little bit when we looked at the size of the classes back to the sixth, seventh grade and how they will uh move through time. But it's the fact that uh that the incoming kindergarten class is going to be smaller than the classes you're going to graduate, and that puts a real downward, you know, it's you have to have enormous housing development growth to overcome that. And so that's that's one thing. And second, that is a little more uh speculative is how much residential growth will there be? Uh, I I really, I would argue strongly that at this point in time uh I would be very cautious about thinking that anything is going to be very robust in the next three to five years. Really think we're um uh people, I I think psychologically, even if they are able to, this is this is had a will have a profound effect on people's psyches. Um, even though interest rates at the point are very low. Um, but you know, what are people's confidence in having a job? I mean, people, uh people have been laid off now who never thought they would be laid off. You know, that that just shocking to people. Um, so I think, you know, that's um that's a factor. And then, as I say, eh eh, you know, it's it's how people perceive the the public school system and the community and the district as a place to live, invest their money. Uh, because there is a yeah, a a growth cluster of of Mankato, Saint Peter uh kind of thing, and and uh how that area does and how much of 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 the growth you can attract is uh I think something worth thinking about.
Hazel, uh, this is Ben Leonard. Um, you've given us a lot of hard data and uh thorough information, so this is not legally binding, but um, I think we're all thinking about the current economic downturn and the virus and do you uh and again, not legally binding, but do you see any potential opportunities for school districts uh in a a town like Saint Peter that we might be able that 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 might come to fruition or might be something that we could explore?
What I what I have seen, now, not everybody can do this, I mean, because if everybody does it, there's no advantage to anyone. But I'm setting a school district now that's uh smaller than you are that put in a uh a virtual academy, uh an online school. And they have attracted uh a number of non-residents. So I don't know what that, I I'm not an expert in this. I mean, I don't know what the demand is around your area. Uh, but that's one thing that people have used. The other thing, I don't know, and you know, this is again, not my area of expertise. But if if districts become good at doing some online learning of that certainly would be a a way of reducing physical plant costs. I mean, that's one of the things, I I think it's going to affect higher education more than than K twelve. I've been wa- I talking to several of my clients, and I also have a grandchild who's at middle school. Middle schoolers don't, elementary, it's tough. Middle schoolers not so fond of, the high schoolers, as they get a little older, eh sort of gravitate to some of it. They, you know, and so I don't know what the opportunities might be. But um.
Yeah, thank you.
I know our next superintendent has quite a bit of experience that he'll be bringing to the district, so that's great.
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna get really good at online virtual learning, so we're getting there right now.
Online virtual board meetings, oh.
Yeah, that's another story, but.
Yeah, we're not getting as good at that as the teachers are, but.
No, I think there, you know, this may uh just change certain things that we didn't, or or speed them up, I ju- I just don't know. But.
Yeah, it's it's uh it's really interesting that to think about, and I mean, we we aren't the smallest district, but ten kids is a big statistical change for us, and so I think there is an opportunity. I I don't think any of us are naive enough to think we're gonna get thirty new kids, but but ten is, you know, it it might not happen, but it's also only ten, ten kids, and how many?
A dollar swing with ten kids.
Yeah, and my parents um need to move out of their house into assisted living. They they can't right now because uh no one's, no one's doing that. But will there be a big influx of uh seniors leaving their their houses after this and those houses becoming available? And you and families who potentially are in the Twin Cities metro who say, I'm gonna cash out now and I'm gonna go back home, you know? Uh, Drew, you did that. Um, others have done that, so.
Well, what you raise is, I think, something worth thinking about. Um, will people say, because while there's some discussion, I thi- I think the data are pretty clear that high density and and public transportation were carriers uh of spreading this infection very fast. And it may uh be that that people say, hey, I'd rather be in an area that is even less densely settled than the suburb I'm living in. And and that that could well uh happen. Um, so yeah, it's it's about making you look, you're 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 basically in a in a a pretty good situation, being on Highway one sixty-nine between the cities of Mankato. I mean, eh that's that's really an asset. You know, you're not remote.
Right.
So I mean, um, well, and and then sometime, some communities are pro-growth and some are not. That's another you know, a factor. Uh. But um I think there's really things you could do that 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 might bring you ten more students, yeah.
Drew?
No, I I just I thank you, the data is great, I trust the data completely. Uh, I just had a hunch that our growth would not stall out as significantly as it's it appears to. I just had a hunch that our growth would not stall out as significantly as it appears to will happen in the next, you know, three, four, five years. That's unfortunate. I was hoping that what we would find is that, oh, yeah, the uptick in activity and growth in Mankato would slide this way as well, but that doesn't appear to be the case, so.
Well, I don't know how much growth is going to occur in Mankato.
Yeah, right.
You know, because if it does, then then you can work on having it slide your way.
Yeah. Well, and and yeah, absolutely. And I think I think about that old joke about the, you know, the bear and getting chased by the bear. You don't have to be the fastest, you just don't want to be the slowest. And I think Mankato could not grow. They have 8,000 students right now. If we could convince 10 of those students to come here, you know, that's not sustainable and that it's not going to happen every single year. But but I think we could pull some Mankato students right now.
It's interesting that one of the things that I remember hearing a couple of years ago is someone was asked a question, how do you effectively market your school district? And the answer is you become really, really good at everything you do. And people know that.
Any other questions for Hazel?
Thank you so much, Hazel.
Well, the other thing, I don't know what percentage of your Gustavus faculty lives in St. Peter or attend the St. Peter Public Schools, but you know, they're that makes districts attractive to some people. Sometimes programs, special programs, if you're strong in music, you're strong in this or that. Sometimes even very small schools can be really dynamite in in an area like that. And it's usually brought about because you have a faculty member who's who's very, very strong.
Well, it's interesting because of, I mean, we talk about how great it is that we have the 169 corridor, but that has also led to a large group of professors commuting from the Twin Cities metro area rather than living in town. That has changed drastically over the last 10, 15 years.
Yeah, I would assume that. And I think in many ways driven because of the larger housing market and more choice in housing and also probably easier to sell a house or perceived easier to sell.
And the other factor that I see is that the employment opportunities for a significant other.
Yes, yes.
Great, well, thank you so much. We we really appreciate it. You're you're welcome to keep tuning in for the rest of the meeting, but I suspect that you have other things to do.
Yeah, I'll go and watch Antiques Roadshow.
There you go.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, stay safe.
If you have any other questions, just contact me.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on the study?
I I just want to mention, I, you know, that we've had some discussions along the line about the online virtual academy. I I think that's really an area that's that's ripe to be harvested, if you will, right now. It's be something that should really be high on on your radar screen as as we move forward. I I look around the region and I think we are hitting on a higher number of cylinders with online learning than our most districts. And that's due in part to we've got more technology than per student than many districts do. We certainly had a head a head start with our flexible learning days. So I I really think that's there's something there. And I think entrepreneurial districts are going to be moving there pretty fast. So it's not like it's a big window. You know, it's a small window started on something like this.
Dr. Olson, I have a strange shot in the dark, but I agree with you. And I wonder if we could potentially talk to the governor, talk to our elected representatives. The tax receipts and and money going into the state is going to be significantly less than we thought it would be a year ago. But there is the legacy amendment. And I wonder, it would take some discussion. It's maybe not realistic, but schools are eligible for legacy funding. And given the situation, I wonder if the governor and our local representatives would maybe think that that might be something worthwhile. And it, you know, it is it is millions of dollars, even if it's millions of dollars less. It's still millions and millions of dollars. And it would be, I mean, it's pretty easy to get a couple hundred thousand. Could we get half a million dollars or half a million dollars for two years in a row? They're not they're not doing anything with it this session because it was all awarded last session. But we do have a year to kind of figure this out. So this time next year is when they'll be deciding both the budget and the the legacy appropriation for the following two years. But they can direct appropriate funds out of that and typically do so.
Yeah. No, I think and I think I think connecting with our legislators is a really good suggestion.
Anyone else? All right, well, we'll move on to the consent agenda. You all have the packets. I don't know if anybody has any questions about any particular item. We're moving away from reading them all aloud, and I don't believe there's any public on this call. They're certainly welcome. I just don't see them. So reading it out for their benefit doesn't help either. But happy to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with a with a second and a vote, or we can also pull any items out that you want.
This is Tracy. Can I just ask a question about it? I'm curious, we have our substitute teachers. Have we been using substitute teachers at all? Or have teachers been just figuring it out if they are sick or whatever? I'm curious.
Principals, feel free to respond to that.
Yeah, we have we have Heidi Niemeyer on board at the high school. Should should teachers need a sub? And, you know, that so far, I I guess I would have to ask Mrs. Clemmison if anybody has taken advantage of that, if if they're sick themselves. You know, we're we're expecting the need might arise. And in the meantime, Heidi is also helping us contact kids due to attendance purpose, for attendance reasons, that kind of stuff.
At North, we have, we haven't had to use a sub for any of our teachers yet. We have Catherine Miller, who is our she's our intern, Minnesota State University Mankato intern sub that we hired at the mid-year point, who is also helping out coordinating of some things and doing some distance learning activities with students. But she's she's waiting to sub for any teacher that may get ill. So we have that in place for the for the elementary levels.
We have not utilized any substitute teachers at the middle school level yet.
We have not at early childhood either. I was just curious more than anything.
Yeah, so so Tracy, I think really the the intent is to have two kind of trained insurance policies if somebody got sick for more than a day or two. And, you know, we'll we'll see if if that transpires or not. I suspect it it very well could.
Gotcha.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion?
Drew Dixon. So moved.
Is there a second?
I need to make the actual motion.
Tracy Stewie will second the motion that you make to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Now a roll call. Bill Soderland?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Thank you. Tim Loken's card?
Loken's card, aye.
Thank you. John Carlson?
John Carlson, aye.
Thank you. Drew Dixon?
Drew Dixon, aye.
Thank you. Tracy Stewie?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Thank you. Ben Leonard, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Consent agenda is adopted.
Chair Leonard, members of the board, if I could, I just think I don't want to let let this pass without recognizing Nancy Seizer. Nancy Seizer spent 35 years in the teaching in in the St. Peter schools, most of those years, if not all, at the kindergarten level. And Mrs. Elk, as you know, when when you get that kindergarten class in at the start of the year, those abilities are really all over the place, from kids that are reading to kids that can't figure out what spot to sit on and the floor and all kinds of things. So Nancy's done a tremendous job for the district, and she served the district very well. And just wanted to make sure that we we noted the retirement of a longstanding teacher and an effective teacher in our school system.
Thank you, Dr. Olson. With that, we'll move into action items. We have two this evening. Payment of bus service for the school closure period. Dr. Olson?
Yeah, I'll I'll give some background and then let business manager Regner jump in as well. You know, as as you're well aware, our schools have been closed by the governor's order really since March 18th. Our first closure day actually started on March 19th because our March 18th day was the end of the third quarter workday for our our school district. During that period, we haven't had regular bus service or special education bus service, but we've we've definitely used our buses to deliver meals, in some case, pick up some kids, some on a regular bus route, some via via the van service. And we had, we have done some early on, some distribution of learning materials to to students and families, although I think we're doing more of that out of each building via via vans at this point in time. But Tim and Regner and I met with representatives of the Saints Bus Service last week to discuss the payment for bus services. And and again, as you're aware, one of the the goals of, I think, the governor, the governor's executive order, the Minnesota Department of Education is to keep people employed to the extent possible. So we have, we reached a tentative agreement with Saints Bus. And that agreement was also reviewed with the Finance Committee at the Finance Committee meeting last Friday morning. And the gist of it is that we would continue to pay our bus contractor for those services where we continue to receive funding. So we're going to continue to receive state funding, which would cover the normal rates for regular routes as outlined in the contract. We have 15 regular routes in the contract. We would also pay for special education routes based on March 2020 services. We're going to continue to receive special education transportation funding. But both of those routes would be net less less than net fuel costs. So obviously, if you're running some routes around town and you're not running your regular, what is it, Tim, about 800 and some miles? And now they're running 246 miles or something like that?
Oh, yeah, that's close. It's like 800 and up rate hundreds that are in front of me. And then I think it's upper, it's close to 300 what they're running on the meal routes. So we're kind of trying to figure out, get the get them all figured out, but that's about approximates.
So we would take net fuel costs multiplied at the most recent fuel price. And we we'd have that deducted from the service. A Saints Bus is not going to charge your bill for any other services not being provided. And this agreement, if you approve it, would last until the end of the school closure distance learning period. And as of right now, that ends a week from Thursday, although you know, we're not sure if the governor will extend distance learning or not. So, Tim, what would you like to add to that? I know you've done a lot of the legwork on this kind of agreement here.
That's pretty much most of it, you know, kind of working on the details now, trying to get the exact miles figured out. And then some of the other routes that they typically don't run or not, special ed and excluding those. And then, you know, going to get together with Lucas from Saints Bus and just try and, you know, come to agreement that, you know, this is the miles and all that other other stuff that goes along with it. It's, you know, it's been a moving target a little bit because of things changing.
Questions from anybody?
Yeah, this is Bill Soderland. I have a, I'd like to know what is, what is the upside and downside of continuing to pay for this service? And what's the downside if we if we said we're not going to? What's the upside if we continue to do it?
Well, I think the, let's start with the with the upside. You know, we've 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 had a tremendous relationship over the years with the transportation provider. Transportation provider has certainly been there to help us out in times when, you know, we maybe had some financial issues where we've gotten a 0%, 0%, 0% increase in in the the bus contract over several years. I think we've done that at least two or three different times. So staying as good partners, I think, is important. Keeping our buses are so keeping our bus contract agreement as long as they agree to keep their in their bus drivers where their regular route drivers and special education route drivers employed is also important. It's important for a couple of reasons. One, probably the most important being if they don't keep their drivers employed, they go out and collect unemployment and maybe or maybe find another job. We may not get them back for bus drivers in the future. The downside is, of course, we're paying, you could argue at some level, for a service we're not getting. However, our state funding continues at the same levels for both special education transportation and regular route transportation. So we're actually getting funded for those routes. And I think that's a a good point in terms of why we would continue to pay for them. If the funding had gone away, as an example, Dr. Soderland, the funding, we don't have funding for our charter routes, our co-curricular routes, our field trip routes. And we've agreed, we won't, we won't be paying for those routes because we're not getting funded for for them. So I don't don't know if that answers your question. Tim, do you want to add anything to that?
I don't really have too much to add. Just that's pretty much where it is. Like I said, we're not doing the extracurricular routes. You know, we get part of the the funding formula is part of the, you know, the overall formula for the transportation. They changed that a number of years back. So we're we're continuing to receive that.
Dr. Olson, when is our current contract up?
Tim, I think it's probably got another five or six years on it. I think I think the contract was extended after the time I retired. It was extended in part to make sure that we were had a good handle on what our expenses would be to the general fund as the new high school came on board and as the as the move to the middle school came on board.
Yeah, it's probably six or seven because I think we extended it for 10 years right before the new school opened. I don't have it in front of me, but we extended it. And then they they kind of layered in the price increase to help us out a little bit as as we, you know, opened up the new school and the new route and those type of things. So, it's probably, it's probably six or seven. I don't have it in front of me, but that's probably how long it's got to go yet.
And I would, I know that our bus contract is very, very competitive in, in, in terms of the overall cost to the district versus other districts our size. So, we have a, we have a favorable contract.
Yeah, I would strongly support this. I think our partnership has been strong for a long time. I mean, it's, it's an essential partnership for us. As we've shifted, it seems to me like the, the school districts have become just as much about education as a logistics arm of the state for distributing nutrition throughout all the communities across the state. Without this partnership, we can't, we can't do that. So, it's, I'm happy that we can have an agreement that works.
Great, thank you, Drew. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Bill Soderland, are we going to be voting on accepting this agreement right now, or are we just talking about it?
It is, it is on the agenda as an action item, so.
But my, my concern right now is I'm not sure what that agreement is. I mean, it sounds like, unless I misunderstood, it sounded like we're still negotiating on what the fuel charge or whatever. I'm not exactly sure. I'm trying to understand, what are we agreeing to? And I, I would like clarification on that.
Sure. Well, Dr. Soderland, the draft agreement is in, is in the board packet on page sixty-seven, I think that's the page anyway.
I'm looking at page seventy-one.
Seventy-one, okay. Might have changed as we added a few action items. So, really, the only thing that isn't, you know, an exact note at this point in time is the, what the net fuel cost is because we're still determining the exact miles driven versus the regular route miles. But, Tim, I think you've got a pretty good handle on that, don't you?
Yeah, we get them every year for other reports we have to do, and I got them earlier from Lucas, who's our rep at the Saints Bus. And it's just a matter of confirming that we, you know, there's fifteen routes. I just want to make sure we got everything, you know, added right and subtracted right and those type of things. So, I, you know, I think we're pretty close. And then, you know, the other big component is, you know, miles per gallon and those type of things. And that, we're just going to have to go and cost per gallon, and that, we just got to work with Saints Bus as our provider and tell us what they are. Honestly, I don't know what, you know, the bus gets four gallons or six gallons, and, you know, then take that times the cost of their fuel. So, that's kind of where we're down to, and just in agreeing on which routes.
Can we pay them in Texas crude oil?
It'd be worth a lot less today, I think, after what happened in the oil market, but.
I don't see where, I didn't see where it ended, but it was at minus forty dollars a barrel of oil at some, at one point, so.
Yeah, they said it was the worst day ever for oil in the future, so the one with closing out, but I didn't see what it ended either, but I don't know when it was, not pretty.
Got some storage capacity, got some caves, in good shape.
I would also just add, you know, as we've been in conversations with area school districts, these are fairly, this kind of agreement is, is pretty consistent, in fact, almost exactly consistent with what we're seeing. Just as an example, as we've been on conversations with the other twelve schools in the Big South Conference, these are the kinds of agreements that, that are there, you know, for the reasons that we've outlined.
Do we have a, do we have a motion?
This is Tim Locensgard. I'm in agreement with Drew. I think that if we're getting funded for it from the state right now, and we're, you know, continually being asked to provide the nutrition meals, the meals, the, the childcare, that sort of stuff. I think this is, in my mind, something that we need to do, and I guess I'm in agreement. I think, Tim, we'll definitely hammer out the numbers and figure out what miles we are getting charged for. So, I move we accept the agreement with four-point-old Saints Bus service.
Thank you, Tim. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
This is John Carlson, I second.
All right. We do have a motion and a second to approve the agreement for payment of bus services for the school closure period. We'll start with Tracy.
All right, okay.
Go ahead, John.
I was just going to say, the, the, the one sort of intangible about this, and I think it's been kind of touched on by a couple of people, is we've had an outstanding relationship with this bus company, and I think Drew and I, we came in at the tail end of the other one that wasn't as, as good of a relationship. I mean, we asked to have cameras installed, they put cameras in the buses. I think it's been a relationship that of, you can't ask for a better business relationship, but anything that we've asked, they've come through, so.
Yeah, thank you. I, that's my perspective too, and, you know, we have five or six years left on a contract because they're willing to give us such a, such a good deal. And, and we've had a really good working relationship with them. Increases have been minimal. When fuel has been lower, I think there have been several instances, and Dr. Olson, you and, and Paul Peterson would know, but, you know, we've, we've renegotiated deals lower or for minimal increase, and they've been really amenable to that. So, I think that this is kind of acknowledging that relationship and putting something into it ourselves, too. With that, I don't hear any further discussion. Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
John?
John Carlson, aye.
Tim?
Tim Locensgard, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Thank you. And Ben Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We're going to, we're going to move on to action item number two, and this is the approval of bids for summer projects. So, Dr. Olson and Mark Bocken?
Yeah, I'll just give you a brief overview and then let Mark take you through the specifics. The projects that you see where we have, you know, the, the the project awarded recommendation are all projects that have, we've been talking about really for, since the beginning of the school year. And we've, we've had these discussions from some of these items at, certainly at facilities committee meetings, finance committee meetings. In the case of Floyd B. Johnson Field and in what you will see coming to Community Spirit Park at co-curricular meetings. We've talked about them at study sessions. Mark has taken our overall budget guidelines and worked within those, and also followed the Minnesota bid law in terms of getting the contracts in place. So, and just, just so you know, that the Minnesota bid law changed a couple of years ago. So, if you have a project that's under twenty-five thousand dollars, you don't need to have any kind of competitive bid process. We generally do try to get at least several contract proposals. You're between twenty-five thousand and, I believe, Mark, a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Yep.
Then, then you have to, you're required to try to go out and get at least ten, or excuse me, at least two quotes. And if you're over a hundred and seventy-five thousand, then you have to go through the competitive bidding process. So, none of these projects are over that one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar mark. But I know Mark has, and he can answer questions about this, has gone in to try to get multiple quotes for all of them. So, with that, Mark, will you take us through that recommendation?
Sure. And as you look at it, you'll notice the only change from what you looked at last time we met is we got the bids back for the relocation of the jump pits. And the low bid on that was Nielsen blacktopping. So, that's, we have a firm number there of the seventy-nine thousand that we didn't have last week. And we also decided on the scoreboard, we've been waiting to see how the bids came in for the jump pit relocation before we decided what we could do with the scoreboards. All the other numbers, nothing has changed from what you've looked at in the past. And the two remaining projects, I think it's two, yeah, actually, it's only one large remaining project. And that is the media center at the middle school. That is going to be over the hundred and seventy-five thousand. So, we're working with ISG to get that out for bid sometime in the next thirty days. And then, when we have that, we'll present that. But the other numbers you see there, you've seen before, there's nothing new to them. Any questions I can answer?
Mark, this is Ben. Have you seen any changes with the pandemic or like supply chain issues or communication issues with, with these bids? And do you anticipate any, any difficulties with doing the work this summer?
With, with the projects that we, that you see right now, everyone has said they won't have a problem committing, completing those. The one that might be a little bit, while it's already taking us more time, is the alterations to the media center. And we'll just have to wait and see on that one. But at this point, most contractors are saying that they are essential and they're able to do their work. So, there hasn't been a lot of slowdown with construction.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anyone want to offer a motion to accept the, the bids?
This is Tracy Stewie. I'll make a motion to accept bids.
Great, thank you, Tracy.
Dixon, second.
Thank you, Drew. Any further discussion?
Mark? Yeah, this is John Carlson. Oh, go ahead, Tim. Do you want to go first?
No, you go ahead.
I was just going to ask, what is happening to the scoreboard that we are replacing?
Good question.
Good question. In order to dispose of it, if it's not of no value, we'll need to either put it up for auction once the board deems it obsolete, or we will just dispose of it if it has no value.
Is there a chance to repurpose that to be used at the high school or a different location?
It could be repurposed. The reason we're replacing it is the components of that scoreboard are now over twenty years old. It's, it's time for an upgrade. It was, decided to upgrade it to an LED version like we have at the high school. So, in my opinion, I don't think we would want to put it at the high school. If we had another field that it could be used on, or that the city might find use for it, we certainly would, I think, offer it to them because it would be a community asset then.
And then, one last question. On the media center, I mean, do we have a total budget that we're shooting for with all these projects combined? And can we go forward with what we're anticipating, with what we anticipate the media center will come back with?
Our budget on the media center is two hundred thousand dollars. There's a chance it's going to come out a little bit higher than that. But we are using funds that we have some flexibility that we could increase a little bit if necessary. I met with ISG to see if there was any way we could get the pricing of the media center alterations under one-seventy-five so we could choose local vendors to, or contractors to take care of that. But as hard as we tried, there was just no way to get it that low. But right now, the estimate is between two hundred and two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand dollars. And I feel confident that we have the money to be able to make that work and not blow our budget.
It fits, John, within the, the overall budget for all of those projects, although there, there are some that are using some different funding sources. Some are long-term facilities maintenance revenue. In the case of the Floyd B. Johnson Field, those are remaining capital projects dollars from our last capital projects levy year. And when we talk about Community Spirit Park, those are remaining bond funds from the new high school.
Thank you.
Tim, you had a question?
Yeah, you touched on it pretty much heavily. I, I was just curious to find out where we were at with, I know we had approved to move forward and get bids, and, you know, if those bids were under, and I think like Floyd Johnson, we had a hundred and twenty thousand slated for that, and it's under that. So, that was my own, that was my question, was are we under on the other ones and?
So far, we are under on everything. The only one that's going to be probably a little bit over is going to be the media center.
Okay, that was my question.
And if I could, this is John Carlson, a follow-up to Tim's point. In the finance committee meeting, there was talk about adding a shed outside, and is that going to be, is there money left over from the bids that that might be a reality, or is that something that we're not checking into?
I would say at this point, it's probably not going to be a reality, just because we know there's, we're going to need some contingency money with any project, and I think our total right now is about a hundred and eight thousand, a hundred and nine thousand of the hundred and twenty. So, I wouldn't want to commit to anything else at this point until we know for sure that we've covered all of our costs. One piece that we haven't concluded yet is the final surfacing for the jump pits. We are taking care of that on our own because we have a vendor we work with that maintains our tracks every year, and we'll have them do that. So, there'll be some expense that goes along with that also.
Thank you very much. Yeah, if that scoreboard is, is auctioned, maybe that's something that Kurt Hildebrand could do a story on. There might be, there might be some local interest in, in that.
I was thinking you were maybe wanting it for your backyard.
That'd be a good bocce scoreboard. But, yeah, that'd be a fun, that'd be a fun story, and somebody might want it for their garage or, or their yard. Well, we have a motion and a second with no further discussion. We'll do a roll call vote on approving the bids for summer projects. We'll start, we'll go the opposite way this time and start with Bill.
Bill Soderland, aye.
Thank you. Tim?
Locensgard, aye.
Thank you. John?
John Carlson, aye.
Thank you. Drew?
Drew Dixon, aye.
Thank you. Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Thank you. Ben Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. That ends our action items, and we have one informational item before reports, and that's just a review of the finance meeting. I don't know, Dr. Olson, if you want to do a quick review, or Tim, or you want members to do that?
I'll take a shot at a quick review, and if you can dive in with any other questions. You have the finance committee minutes from the April seventeenth finance committee in your board packet. Couple of key points. The first item that we talked about was our health and hospitalization rate from Blue Cross Blue Shield. That rate is set to increase two-point-five percent for two thousand twenty, twenty-one. We were projecting, based on what we had seen from our insurance advisor a year ago, a ten percent rate increase, so that's good news. We also spent quite a bit of time on the four-year rollout. We also spent quite a bit of time on the four-year rollout. Where a business manager, Regner, went through very specific, almost line-by-line items. But some of the key pieces there are that we are projecting a zero percent legislative increase in fiscal year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three. We do note that we are using part of our fund balance, which is from our assigned operational fund of one million six hundred and seventy thousand dollars over a four-year period. We also have budget adjustments set for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for next year and four hundred thousand dollars for the final year or for the following year, excuse me, fiscal year twenty-two. A reduction in expenditures in fiscal year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three from what our current expenditures have been at. And an increase in operating referendum. And that is showing the operating referendum going out in the fall of twenty-twenty-one. And that is projected at this point as three hundred and eleven dollars and ninety cents, which raises seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars a year. And it would have an inflationary adjustment to it. So a number of questions were asked, finance committee did a really good job, I think, of asking a lot of clarifying questions. And then we also talked about our four hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget adjustment. We looked at some of the potential items there. That will be coming back as a part of the budget plan at your May eighteenth school board meeting. We talked a bit about some specific personnel adjustments. We talked about the summer maintenance projects and we talked about the payment for bus services. And then the two things that are left really from the from the finance committee and the budget end of things. On the May fourth special board meeting, we will ask you to accept and adopt a revised budget for fiscal year twenty for this year. And then at your June fifteenth regular school board meeting, you'll be asked to accept and adopt a preliminary budget for fiscal year twenty-one. That is a must because if you don't officially adopt a budget for fiscal year twenty-one in June, you can't expend any money beginning July first. So, Tim or members of the finance committee, anything anybody would like to add?
I thought that was, go ahead, Tim.
You know, we're gonna, I'll go a little bit more on the revised budget. It's kind of been a moving target here, obviously, within the last month or two with all the the other stuff happening. It seems like, you know, we we lost some revenue and then we got some less expenses. So I think it's going to work out fairly well, or not fairly well, but it'll be okay for for two thousand twenty, our FY twenty, and then we'll have to see going forward. We did talk some about real estate tax collections. I talked with the county auditor earlier in the week and, you know, I think we'll be be fine here in the the first half of the year. And then, you know, depending on how things develop. And that has to do with our levies, you know, and those things collecting on the real estate taxes. But I think we'll be okay here as far as it's a cash flow thing. But, you know, we're kind of watching that to see how that develops. And the other thing that's been, you know, it was kind of a little bit of concern, but it's really held is during this time of the distance learning, our enrollment has held, so that that's obviously a good sign for for that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Perfect, thank you. Looks like we can roll into reports if the principals are still with us. Why don't we, why don't we start with the Tve since it's her birthday?
Yeah, happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Yes, thank you. Yep, so early childhood is clicking right along in distance learning. We've had really good participation from families, both synchronous and asynchronous. So live and watching recorded lessons. I shared one with Dr. Olson today and it really is impressive what our teachers have done in the last four weeks. So really appreciate their work and families continuing to work with their kids at home, so that's wonderful. We did do a district-wide survey regarding distance learning and early childhood results. We sent that to all of our families. We did only get ten back and the principals will report on their sites as well. But our results based on the feedback from those ten folks was was good as far as the amount of work their students are getting, their comfort level with technology and the support from the school. So so we felt good about that. Both our teachers and our paraprofessionals are not only connecting online with kids, but they're also doing postcards and so, and kids are taking pictures of those and posting them on homeroom. And they're really enjoying getting what we would think of snail mail. So they're enjoying that and we don't often get that these days, so that's a fun experience for them. We've had teachers delivering packets to homes when kids need things, paraprofessionals as well, so so that's all going well. We're looking towards twenty twenty-one school year and we're working on our registrations now. So we'll be doing a district-wide mailing for any child who's eligible for preschool next year to try to get those registration packets out to them. Right now, we have about thirty registered, but certainly we usually have more than that in our program. So we'll continue to do some outreach with that. And AFI and RepSA have been essential in their roles as the student support liaisons in helping us connect with families, making sure they're getting what they they're needing and help with the technology. So we appreciate that. So that's a brief report about early childhood, I'm happy to answer any questions.
At some point before the meeting is over, can you show us a puppy?
Well, if yes, if yes. I have, we have three, we have triplets, two boys and a girl, so. Yeah, they're pretty sweet.
Thank you.
All right, I bet I'm next, huh?
Tracy, I was gonna ask a quick question for ET. How was the early childhood screening, how was that affected? I usually have some in April, I think, don't you, and then what's the plan?
Yeah, that's a really good question, Tracy. So there are two challenges right now, our early childhood screening and the referrals for early child assessments. So with early childhood assessments with our infants, our birth to two, what we're looking at right now is guidance through the state that says if we think they will qualify, if it looks like they will, then we're going to serve them. We're just going to serve them now, take them into the program and do the online work with families with their infants. And so we've been doing that. With our three-to-five-year-olds, it's a little bit more challenging. We haven't, we've had a couple referrals for that group and we're pulling them into classes. Some of those referrals made or those actual assessments will be postponed until we receive either another option from the state as far as assessment or we're back in session. But we are bringing those kids into programming. And then with early childhood screening, our April screening is typically focused on those students who are going to kindergarten and haven't yet been screened. And so our plan for that will be, just as we have in other years, any child who hasn't been screened will be doing that that first week of school when they're at South. And so our group will most likely just be a larger screening group this year than we have had in the past. But those are our approaches to those challenges right now. But that's a really great question, thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Would you like me to go? Ready for South? Okay, all right, at South, we too have been really busy, as you can imagine. I think when I, I don't even remember, it seems like it was so long ago. But, you know, our very first thing, what to do was to really get our teachers up to speed. We didn't have any devices other than what the students use in their classrooms. So that entailed getting passwords, getting devices out. And then really just providing some very quick PD, teaching our teachers how to do that. So I would like to do a shout-out to Angie Potts, Lori Purret and Kari Blyd, who really took on that instructional technology piece and just really went to town in getting our teachers comfortable with the platform that we're using and putting together all of the information. There were like a twelve-page packet that was mailed out to parents explaining each one of the platform, or the platform, how to use it, how to log on, and then giving them all the passwords. So when you think about that tremendous amount of information that was sent out to parents and with the expectation like, okay, here it is, now we have to make it, make it go. We are still working through some of those pieces. It's going relatively well. The responses to that survey, we did end up having a hundred and nineteen of our three hundred students, there were responses turned in, which was great. And then the great thing was we had eighty-two percent rate on communication. So they feel we're doing a great job of communicating. They also had a high level of confidence, I think it was eighty-nine percent in our ability to deliver it. Some of the areas that we are working on, I have a meeting tomorrow with the BLT and we will just talk about how do we continue to support in the area of their students using the technology. And I think again, it's just because there's so many new pieces for them. So we have used, we have a para who is bilingual, so he has been very instrumental. David Arzola has gone out and he has done a lot of translating and walking people through actually using the device, he and Kari Blyd have been very, very instrumental in that. So that is what we have going on in the area of teaching and learning. We also have saints care going on in our building and we average about eight students every day. And again, a shout-out to the paras, they have just been phenomenal about helping the students with their distance learning while they're there and also making an enjoyable experience for the students. And Mimi in the kitchen is doing whatever she can to make sure that the food is being distributed easily. And it has just been one of those opportunities to just really look at the wonderful people that we have and you put them all together and great things are happening even in a time when when we were not sure what what our next steps needed to be. They've been with us every step of the way. One area that we are going to be talking about tomorrow is our kindergarten registration. We currently are at fifty-one students. And in part, that's because it hit the week of our kindergarten registration is the week that we were shut down. So just continuing to do some outreach to get people to fill those forms in. We will be talking about that tomorrow a little bit more on how do we do, what outreach can we do at this time to try to get people to turn them in. We have gone through everyone that we know and we have made phone calls and made sent out emails. But we're still just not seeing those forms come in. So we do know that there are several out there yet, they have confirmed that they are coming, but we have not gotten the forms back. Every day, it just seems to go a little smoother, so that's, there's signs of hope.
Greetings from the virtual North Elementary, everybody. Yeah, I would, I gotta start off echoing what ET even Doreen said. We we have super talented staff all across the district, and North is no exception. Saints care going on, food delivery, front office staff, technology. People have happily added elements to their job description, so to speak, in order to make learning keep going for students. And that's, that's the thing that we've been talking a lot lately, something that's on the agenda for tomorrow's BLT team meeting tomorrow of how how teachers can maintain this level of connectivity with their students because it's, the messaging I'm getting, they are working incredibly hard, but they feel like they're still not doing enough. And that's something that you kind of see on social media under, in a lot of educational Twitter sphere. So just kind of reinforcing them, letting them know they're they're doing the great work. But we have phenomenal staff stepping up each and every day. That being said, we are on like, today was number twelve distance learning day. So the North PBS team felt like we better get some dress-up days going this week. So I don't know why PJ Day was still popular today since probably the days they've been wearing their PJs. But they still had it again today, close off, we got some team wear and Saint Day, of course, and wacky. So that's going on all week long. And if you'd have been in the Dorsey neighborhood, you would have seen Mr. Dorsey wandering the field in a pajama top, recording my morning video message to the students. So luckily, I didn't get reported by the local PD, to the local PD. Feedback as far as our parent survey with with distant learning also looked really, really good. One that popped out to me was nine out of ten out of the one hundred and two respondents said that they were very comfortable with technology. I think that has a lot to do with, we've been using Seesaw at North for three years already, and so students are pretty comfortable with that as well as they have that experience plus they're older and they're more comfortable with that login. So we've seen some really good comfort level with that as well as parent communication, eighty-five percent think it's right on with about ten percent saying like, too much. Back off a little bit, but otherwise, that's that's a sweet spot. And then, you know, the part that we want to look at adjusting a little bit, it looks like about one out of five feeling like it's potentially bordering on a little bit too much work for the student. I mean, the vast majority, three out of four, are saying the workload is is just right. So seventy-five percent reported that, but there's still, you know, one out of five kind of saying like, it's getting a little heavy. So that's something, I think, district-wide, we were kind of looking at, but North was no different along that sense either. And as I mentioned, BLT team meeting tomorrow to keep an eye on some of our big rocks. Some things that we're looking at are a student survey that we're working on to see how fourth graders, we're not doing second, third grade, but we think fourth graders should be able to handle a student survey and give us some good information as far as adjustments that may need to happen. As well as, you know, starting to think about building class lists for next year. Parent input, and we usually do orientation, couple orientation nights for incoming second graders and looking like that will take place in August. And, you know, just some, just some big items like that.
Thank you, any?
At the middle school also, oh, sorry.
No, go for it.
At the middle school also, you know, our teachers and our staff have just been incredible in terms of just whatever it takes kind of attitude. Blown away at the amount of work that people are putting in to make this thing work for all kids. We have, like everybody else, a combination of asynchronous and synchronous learning going on with our distance learning plan. Our fifth and sixth graders have synchronous learning going on on Mondays. One, I'm sorry, one content area per day. So for example, English classes all meet on Mondays. Math classes all meet on Tuesdays and so forth. Our seventh and eighth graders are working slightly differently. They're doing all of their synchronous learning days on Mondays and Tuesdays. So students actually work through their schedule Monday and Tuesday mornings. So for example, on a Monday morning, block one starts at ten, block two at ten-thirty and so forth. And what those synchronous learning activities are really designed for is just to provide kids with the opportunity to see their teachers and to be able to interact with their with their peers. A lot of great things have been going on district-wide, but just some numbers from the middle school. We distributed three hundred and thirty-eight Chromebooks to our students to make sure that students have the the technology that was needed to make this go. So far, we've distributed twenty-eight hotspots. And we continue to work on making sure that students have the connectivity they need to make it, to make it the most beneficial for them. But it's kind of been mentioning the survey. That survey also went out at the middle school, we had a hundred and fifty-five respondents. I really appreciate parent feedback and all those who took the time to respond. Overall, the the perception was very, very positive. Some things that we, that we're continuing to work on at the middle school. Number one is consistency. You know, we're the first grade level, or the first grade bands anywhere, where students have multiple teachers. So how do you navigate in this world where you have to log into four different classes per day? And how does that look the same across the boards? We're really working on consistency there. And the other thing that we're really looking at and digging into is that balance of workload. You know, there's that fine line on it's too easy, so it's disengaging. Or it's too hard, so it's disengaging. Our survey results in terms of the overall academic workload, we had kind of that perfect bell curve where the majority of folks felt that it was spot-on. But it's skewed a little bit toward the the too much, so we have to start thinking about about that. In terms of moving forward, we're really getting our eyes on, you know, what will fifth grade orientation look like? Right about now is the time where we typically have fourth graders coming in for tours. And we have apparent orientation kind of in mid-May typically. And that may not be able to happen, so we're starting to think about what are some other options, perhaps virtually, to get some students acclimated before the summer.
All right, I can fill you in on the happenings at the high school. Like the other principals filled you in, we had a district wide parent survey. But it was sent out by building. And, and overall, we were, we were all very pleased with the results of that survey. At the high school, you know, we had the advantage of already being a one-on-one, one-on-one building. And so, so 90.4% of all respondents said that they were, that the students seemed, no, 99% said that the students were very comfortable with using the technology, which has been very helpful to both teachers and kids. The workload is one, is one conversation that, that we're having district wide. At the high school, I would say the results told us that it seems to be working for most students, for the majority of students. But, but a couple of groups that we're specifically concentrating on and talking to departments and making sure that they're communicating with content area teachers are special education and EL. You know, add on the layer of technology and, and distance learning on top of what's already, what's already difficult can be really stressful. And, and again, not just at the high school, but at every building, we're really stressing relationships. And, and I hate to say relationships over rigor, but relationships and rigor. And I think at this point that those relationships are incredibly important to keep kids engaged. Obviously at the, at the high school, there are some concerns, especially with our upperclassmen, juniors and seniors, especially our seniors who we think about. We're constantly planning and planning again and planning for a moving target. So, so we're, we're constantly working on, on scheduling events, rescheduling events, doing virtual events, you know, kind of having a plan A and a plan B while we wait for more guidance from the Department of Education and the governor. I can't say enough, the others have, have said it as well. Our teachers and all of our staff members are working incredibly hard. And, and they will all tell you that they, that it's crazy how, how exhausting this work is compared to a normally exhausting school day. It's just very different, you know, teachers don't go into education to work, work alone. So that's been, we're, we're starting to think about, about our staff too. And just making sure that they're doing okay as well. So thank you to, to everybody across the board from food service, our bus drivers, our paras and our teachers who are doing really incredible work.
As long as Annette mentioned food service, I do want to just mention that, and you've probably been, been following this in Kurt's newsletter, but we're consistently serving over 2,000 meals a day through our meal distribution program. So it, it really is incredible. Last week we distributed over 19,000 meals for that spring break meal pack. So that's incredible work that our food service people are doing preparing and our paraprofessionals distributing and our bus drivers supporting us for that. So much appreciated.
That's fantastic. Great. Well, thank you so much. And yeah, I just echo everyone's sentiments that the staff across the board are really going above and beyond. And you know, it's, it's challenging enough to, to do something completely different at the drop of the hat near the end of the year. And we're all trying to follow the news and deal with our own personal lives and deal with being sequestered at home. And it's just, it's a lot for everyone and we, we really appreciate it. Dr. Olson, do you have any updates?
I do. I, I again want to echo the kudos to all of our staff for the incredible work that they do. And I also want to echo that in terms of our administrative team. We have a, you know, a mission statement that says, learning matters. I would say leadership matters. And we're seeing tremendous leadership from our team all across the board in terms of moving the cheese to deal with everything from distance learning to technology distribution, to technology access, to meals, to childcare. And keeping an eye on the normal big rocks like kindergarten roundup and graduation and building master schedules for next year and class list for next year. So all of that's going on. I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we aren't losing sight of those things. We're actually meeting next Monday to start talking about summer programming. And one of the things that, that's important to note is, is we do these things, we have to be kind of in two worlds. We have to be planning for summer programming as if it would be the traditional world. But then we also have to be preparing our summer programming if it's, as if it's in a virtual world. Both of those things are happening. Also want to do a shout out to our staff and to our school resource officers for student welfare checks. You know, we're really spending a lot of time making sure that we're connecting with all kids and families. And we're not losing anybody in this distance learning world. So our social workers, our Saints 508 care staff are all doing a great job there. And then just finally, you know, one of the things that I found really helpful is we do a weekly hangout with the superintendents of the Big South Conference. And that's been a very, very good group to bounce ideas off of and to, to learn some things that are going on in other school districts. And you know, what we, we have an old adage in, in the school administration that says, you can be a great ripper offer. So we're ripping off ideas if they're good ones and we're trying to get those into play. So that's it from me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Olson. We'll go, yeah.
Ben, can we, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So with the MCA's not happening, I'm assuming they're not happening. How are we measuring learning? Do we have some secondary things that we're trying to use? Or are we, is that just something that is too complicated and off our radar?
Darren, you want to take a shot at that?
Yeah, sure. First I'll address the, the MCA's. And yep, the Feds Director of Education allowed states to apply for waivers. So the accountability assessments, the state of Minnesota has applied for one of those waivers and should receive it. So yeah, the only annual assessment that we were able to complete and turn in was the access for ELs. So that actually did get all completed just in the nick of time and sent off. We'll get those results. So as far as language acquisition, that'll be one we'll be able to look at the data on. We've had some discussions about FAST assessments at some of our principal, our like regional principal meetings. There isn't anybody in our region, probably in the state, that will be administering spring assessments with FAST assessments and reading and math. Just because, I mean, you'd pretty much have to put an asterisk by all the scores because even though we can administer them across devices, there's no guarantee on how, you know, I, I don't know what kind of results we'd get from those. They probably wouldn't be very accurate. And as far as all the students taking them, like I said, it probably wouldn't be worth it as far as the results. So really what we've been looking at is, you know, we, we did gather data from the fall screening of math and reading and FAST. We did gather data on the winter screening. So we have that, but as far as anything else we could use to track formalized assessment results, that's, that's probably going to be it.
Can I, I'll just chime in, sorry, I'll just chime in for one, just to remind everybody that thankfully, I mean, I always wonder if we should be going with that ACT date of, of February because it's also offered in the spring. Schools can ACT test their juniors in the spring. And we went with February, so we got our ACT and our pre-ACT tests in for our sophomores and our juniors.
The other thing I mentioned is, is we started to talk about the implementation of distance learning. One of the things we really focused on is that we were still going to be zeroing in on the Minnesota standards. So, you know, while we don't have a, maybe a standardized assessment, we are still focused on the key standards that are in place for grade levels for reading, for mathematics, for science, and in all of our subject areas across the district.
I have another question. One of the things in reading the notes from the administrators meeting today was the unbalance and workload between different classes. And I'm wondering, are PLCs able to meet or are they doing that at all? Is I, that's my question.
Yep. I, I can say the grade level teams, specialized department interventionists are all meeting on a regular basis. I'm pretty sure, I know second, third and fourth grade meet every day virtually, online. They, as Dr. Olson said, it's, it's, it's part of their culture to base all their lessons and standards. They've actually been working together at eighth through fourth grade levels to make sure they're staying consistent. So they've, they've actually helped record each other's, let's see, readings of books. They've tried to change it up just for what the students see in here. But the, the, the foundation of that is the consistent delivery. So to answer your question, yep, they're meeting daily, if not every other day.
I, I think, John, one of the things that, that I took from, not only from that survey, but also from the questions that we, that we're getting on our COVID email line from parents that we encourage them to send questions in on a regular basis. It's probably more the consistency on how you log in. And, you know, as John Graff mentioned, you get to the fifth, sixth grade level and, and you might have, when we started out, we might've had some different, I don't know if we'd say standards, but different ways of logging in, different expectations. I think that routine is important to make sure we're establishing. And if you're a fifth grade parent, we want to try to have consistency in terms of the kinds of things that parents are helping their kids log into, as an example. John Graff, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, definitely. It's, it's more, from my standpoint, it's more of a concern of the, the consistency of the logistics, not the consistency of the instruction.
Okay, that, that helps a lot. What has happened to QCOM? Is that even a thing for this year or is that?
QCOM is, the, the direction we've been given from the Minnesota Department of Education is to try to work with our local teaching group and our local QCOM committee to address how we're going to deal with QCOM. But as you're well aware, many of our QCOM goals and attainment targets are based on standardized test results, MCA results and the like. And we're not going to have those. So we do have a meeting set on this, a week from today with our QCOM committee. And we'll start discussing those kinds of things. The Department of Education is giving us some guidance. But we're going to be working with the Minnesota School Boards Association and the Minnesota Association of School Administrators, the Superintendent's Group and Principal Groups, as well as admin to figure out how we navigate QCOM. But that's a really good question, John, and I don't think we have a, we don't have a clear answer at this point.
Okay, I'm sorry, I still have three questions. We approved co-curricular supervisors and advisors and coaches. Have we done any monitoring of connections that they're making with people that were going to be on their team? Or I guess they're on their team or in the play or whatever.
Annette?
Yeah, Jordan has communicated with all of our coaching and directing and advising staff members on some, some of it is just merely giving suggestions for how they can work with kids best and with each other over this time. They all have their log sheets and that was really just kind of communicated out to them last week after, was it just Days Are Running Together, was it last week? That was approved. I think just last week they started logging some of their activities.
I can tell you from a, from a standpoint of the Olson grandkids, I've asked them about that and they are being connected with on a regular basis with their coaches and advisors.
I, I like what was sent out, and this is for Annette and Dr. Olson. I like what was sent out about the graduation, but how did you decide that you wanted to go with May 29th? No matter what, rather than a delay into the summer?
If you want, you start Annette and then I'll jump in.
Yeah, yeah, I will. Well, speaking of May 29th, no matter what, something will happen on the, on our seniors' graduation day. Whether that's in person or virtual, we really want to recognize them on, on the day that they graduate. We have a, we have a fear that we'll lose some kids after the school year is over. And, and our belief, and we feel very strongly about the fact that every student who earns, earns their diploma deserves the right to be seen and, and hear their name read by their friends and family. And, and so that's what, from what we know now, that's, that's the way that we can do that.
Yeah, I think I just want to reiterate that point that Annette made. And that's that it's really, really important that when you have a graduation ceremony, that all students that have earned their diploma earn the right to participate in that exercise. And it's our feeling that we'll get a significantly higher percentage of all students participating when we stick with that, that date, that's a day after school ends. It's the date that's been on the school calendar for probably a couple of years. And that's not to say that there can't be some event. And Annette's talked with that, worked with staff on that after the fact. But the experience that I had in 10 years as a high school principal and 12 years as superintendent of schools is that once you get past that last day of school, that last weekend, a certain percentage of the kids are, are off. Some are, some have military commitments, they, that occur shortly after school's out. Others are into jobs, they're moving, et cetera. So that's really the primary reason for that. Troy?
That's a great answer that I can give people that ask me about it. Thank you. My last question, there was note of some people opting for homeschooling. I, I noticed in the principal's notes from today, how big a percentage of people is that? Is it, are we talking one or two? Or are we talking significant amounts? And how does that affect our count for students?
We're talking one or two right now. It's a small number. In some districts, it's a bigger number. But I think that one of the things that maybe some of the, some of the, in some of those districts, if some parents are making that choice, they may not understand all of the requirements that are still in place when you homeschool a student. It's not like you're just pulling them out and they're kind of on their own. There's still, still requirements that have to be met. So I think that's just something that we, we've been hearing from some of our other school districts. And we've had like, I think, was it Darren, one, one student or one family at this point?
Yeah. And that's, that, yeah, that was actually just brought up by a regional principal session. I was in a principal's just sharing that they had a substantial amount of students trying to homeschool. And so we were just kind of talking about that. And it's, as Dr. Olson said, it hasn't really had an impact here.
Okay, yeah, because I had heard that was happening in other districts and I just didn't, I wanted to know extent in ours. Thank you, Ben, for letting me ask my questions.
Absolutely. Go for it, Bill.
I'd like to ask a question about, are we connecting with, are there students that we're not able to connect with or that are not able to interact with us? And then how are we reaching out to them to correct that or to connect with these students?
Well, maybe start with Doreen because I would say that that number is probably a little bigger at the lower elementary level, but not, not huge. But go ahead, Doreen.
Okay, some of the things that we've been doing are, you know, first of all, every week checking with teachers, who are the students that you have not heard from this week? Because it even has changed over the course of the last couple of weeks. So the first contact is teachers reaching out, trying to, to make contact with them. And then we have been using the, our interpreters heavily because many times it's a, it's a language barrier. And that's, that has probably been one of our biggest challenges. So using our social worker, using, John Hughes has gone to a couple of homes with the social worker trying to see, check on just the welfare of the students. I've been making calls to parents. Again, it's, it's challenging, I think, for people with young children, just because many- Again, it's, it's challenging, I think, for people with young children, just because many of them are trying to work from home. And so that gets to be hard. So we're trying to help parents kind of go through that. We do have activities on our, on our distance learning that students can do independently. So we're recommending, you know, kind of telling them, these are some activities that the students should be able to do on their own. These are the things that they may need some help with. And we're also offering our services. We have paraprofessionals that are working on an A D schedule. So we have some paras that are actually being paired up with students and they check in with them to see if they can help support them. So we're doing, we're doing what we can and we're just keeping a really tight eye on that.
Dr. Soderland, I'd also add that we have an ongoing list of students who we've had maybe infrequent contact with. And those students are checked on regularly, including with our school resource officers on a, at least a weekly basis.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Drew, do you have anything?
No.
Tim? Tracy?
I do. First off, Dr. Olson, I just wanted to thank you. I just, I'm so glad that we have you as the leader right now. I just, I trust you very much. Not that I don't trust the other people, but I just, I feel like you're always telling everyone thank you, that I wanted to pass the same along. I just wanted to offer a little bit of feedback to some of the principals. And as far as standards, and I often am hearing teachers talk about their I can statements. So those things actually are happening. It's not just something they say they're doing. I think all the teachers do a really good job in trying to be very personal and keep that relationship up with the kids. With the whole consistency piece, what I always say, I always tell Bill, like if I'm confused, then we have a problem. But it isn't bad. It's just, you know, you guys know that. And it's all on how they make the Google Classroom. It's all on how they make that assignment. And it's, are they making it so every Google sheet has a kid's name? Or is it supposed to be a PDF? And where the heck is it? And I thought I turned it in. And, and I think that's where I would say 90% of the frustration that I hear from people is coming from. And then the other part that I hear a lot of frustration with is, well, two things. One is the absences. And my kid is showing absent and they're not. And I'm just telling people, just don't worry about it. Like seriously, no one's going to go to Tulane C jail over distance learning if you're legitimately logging into your classes. But, and at the high school is the grades and wanting to know, because apparently Mankato had done pass fail and wanted to know why we couldn't. And I said it had something to do with the NCAA, but I couldn't remember. So that's all my feedback.
Yeah, Tracy, if people are concerned about those grades, I would just direct them back to the high school distance learning plan. And we have a adjusted grading scale that will be reflected once those mid-quarter grades are submitted across the board for all of the classes, other than those that are concurrent courses through either the U of M, MSU or South Central College. So I, I think once, once people see their adjusted, that adjusted scale, that will put their minds at ease as well.
Yeah. And I maybe just have too much. I'm just kind of like, just don't sweat at people. It's all going to be fine. Because honestly, it's like, don't get upset if your kid was showing absent period four yesterday. I don't, who cares? Like us.
Yeah, I would, I would say, Tracy, that one of the things that we're, we're really getting there with, with the attendance. But you can imagine figuring out how to take attendance in a distance learning is, is really challenging. And then somehow this morning, and you probably know more about this than I do, but somehow the system, something crashed in the technology system. And a whole bunch, almost all the ninth graders got marked as absent. So that's been corrected, but I mean, it's that kind of thing that's just out there.
Well, and I do know because I happen to live with a teacher too. And so I get to hear about attendance a lot also. And it is, and it's a, it's a very putz-y thing for the teachers to have to deal with too. And then, you know, and then kids have to remember to fill out the form. You know what? I just think everyone's doing great. We all just need to chill out. It's going to be fine. And no one's going to fail in life because they did distance learning in 2020. That's my takeaway. Maybe I'm a little too tired tonight.
Thanks, Tracy. Tim, did you have anything? I see you left and then you came back in. If, I don't know if you have any connection issues or?
Yeah, I have rural internet, so that's.
And your kids need to use it, so.
I just asked them, who's on it? No, I have nothing.
All right, excellent. I, I don't either. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn?
I'll second that. Tracy, Stewie.
Drew Dixon.
Excellent. We have a motion in a second. So we'll just go down the list. Tracy?
Hi.
Thank you. Drew?
Drew Dixon, aye.
John?
John Carlson, aye.
Tim?
Tim Mulgatskert, aye.
Bill?
Phil Soderlund, aye.
I, I, I as myself too, Ben Leonard, that motion carries unanimously. Before we leave the call, the meeting is adjourned.